Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Hey, guys. Please stand for a silent prayer moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the open public meetings at Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The reorganization meeting notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster and the Star Ledger on December 18th, 2021, and was posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to the nomination of the deputy mayor.
Hold on one second. I apologize. Are you leaving right after? Let's go to the swearing in of the deputy mayor.
Well, first you need to vote. Yeah, we have to nominate our nomination first. Motion. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton. Yes. Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn. Well, well. And Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to the swearing in of the deputy mayor.
Jensen, you're gonna help me do this?
Okay.
Right or left? You're gonna put your left hand on the bottom.
Mr. Hammond really want the Bible?
Bible's gonna explode.
Pete, everybody. Hi, state your name.
I am Amy Quinn.
Do solemnly swear or...
Do solemnly swear or...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same and to the governments established.
To the same and to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state.
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And partially.
Partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties of the office of.
All duties of the office of.
The City of Asbury Park, Deputy Mayor.
The City of Asbury Park, Deputy Mayor.
According to best my ability.
According to best my ability. So, oh my God.
Congratulations.
Well, I at least wanted you in one, honey. Jensen, back here for one more second and then we're done. You guys can leave after that. Basically done. Hold that.
Wait, I don't want this shirt.
We're sure you'll show your character.
Jason, what's this one?
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
That's it. That's it, done. There you go.
Thank you. See you tomorrow night. And did you guys hurt his arms for today?
Oh.
Can I prove her? So, these are going to be like some people? Marilyn and Kim?
Yes, those two.
Those eyes, right? And you can see there, too.
It's okay, though.
You don't count, Jeff.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Congratulations.
Okay, before Melanie goes back to the agenda, I just want to follow up with Amy. We have with us tonight our team who Assemblywomen elect will be sworn in January 11th. And we congratulate you. We wish you the best of luck and no bounds for your park where we need help. So Marilyn and Kim, please say a couple words. And we have a hand mic if you need it. But seeing how big the crowd is tonight, I think everyone can hear you.
Yeah, I think we can talk almost virtually.
Okay. And also keep it, we're being, you're taped, you're gonna be taped and up in a day or two. So, I'm Marilyn Papernow. And just so you get up on the other end.
I'm Marilyn Papernow. And it's a pleasure and honor to be here. Kim and I worked very hard this past year. And some of our main points that we felt very passionate about were refunding our schools and supporting our communities. And I believe that that's part of the messaging that really helped resonate with all the local communities in L D eleven. So, we're gonna do our best, truly try, sincerely try our best. We're here to forge relationships and help you guys pick up whatever you need to take care of as many people as we can. So, we look forward to serving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kim Olner. Thank you for having me here tonight. As Marilyn just said, I'd like to echo her sentiments. We're looking forward to being involved, not just being in any ma on a wall or a website, but to be here boots on the ground to help you guys. And not just come when you need help, but when you're having, you know, great occasions and just all events. So, we're looking forward to working with you all and the other 17 towns in L D eleven. So, thank you.
Potentially more, right?
Congratulations. Thank you for attending tonight. And we have a bunch of appointments coming up. So, if you want to stay for this morning stuff, God bless you. But if you want to, like, go home, you're free to do that.
You should totally go home.
Is it rude if we, if we, like, start to snooze and leave?
Go, go, go before you snooze.
I'd like to listen.
Okay, okay. You ready, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Okay, we are on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have resolutions 2022-1 through 2022-20. I'm looking for a motion.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to individual resolutions. The first individual resolution we have is 2022-2021. The appointment of the deputy mayor.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-22, a resolution providing for the 2022 temporary budget appropriation.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-23, a resolution appointing Frederick Ziver Fado Esquire to serve as municipal attorney for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-24, a resolution of reappointment of Joanne Boos to the position of Chief Financial Officer with tenure.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-25, a resolution appointing PFK O'Connor-Davies to serve as auditor for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-26, a resolution appointing T and M Associates to serve as municipal engineer for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional engineering services associated therewith.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-27, a resolution pursuant to NJSA 40:48-1, authorizing the city engineer to perform services as the designee to the city manager for review of development permits in any area of a special flood hazard.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-28, a resolution appointing Archer and Grinder PC to serve as redevelopment council and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-29, a resolution appointing Archer and Grinder PC to serve as bond counsel for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-30, a resolution appointing Marizini and Palkin to serve as redevelopment council and authorizing the execution of agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-31, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Asbury Park to enter into a professional service agreement with Public Resources Advisory Group for the provision of pilot RAB administration.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-32, a resolution awarding a contract for U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, Brownfields Communitywide Hazardous Substances Assessment Grant and Petroleum Communitywide Assessment Grant Services to Brownfield Redevelopment Solutions Incorporated, BRS.
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-33, a resolution appointing Akashia Financial Group to serve as financial advisors for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-34, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional appraisal services to BRB valuations. Camilla J. Brodkowski.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-35, a resolution appointing GGM Insurance Agency to serve as an insurance brokerage consultant, risk manager, and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-36, a resolution appointing the law offices of Parker McKay, PA, to serve as Oprah counsel for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-37, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the firm of Kyle McManus Associates LLC to perform professional affordable housing planning and/or consulting services.
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-38, a resolution appointing law offices of Janobah Burns LLC to serve as labor counsel for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-39, a resolution appointing Community Grants Planning and Housing LLC to serve as affordable housing administrative agent for the City of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-40, a resolution appointing the firm of Serenean Edwards &amp; Nolan LLC to serve as special affordable housing council for the City of Asbury Park.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-41, a resolution appointing city prosecutor, James Butler Jr.
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-42, a resolution appointing alternate city prosecutor, James Carton.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-43, a resolution appointing city public defender, Matthew Sage.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-44, a resolution appointing alternate public defender, Donald Greer.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-45, a resolution appointing Gregory P. Pasquale Esquire to serve as special tax counsel for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-46, a resolution appointing the firm of Jean J. Anthony Esquire to serve as rent leveling board adjourned for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-47, a resolution appointing various firms to provide architectural services for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional architectural services associated therewith.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-48, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the firm of Ingenuity Infrastructure to perform special project engineering services.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-49, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the firm of Topology, New Jersey LLC to perform consulting planning services.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-50, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the firm of Dynamic Traffic LLC to perform special project engineering services.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-51, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the firm of A R H Inc. to perform special project engineering services.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-52, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the firm of Decimong Consulting Engineers to perform special project engineering services.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to Resolution 22-53, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Asbury Park TV Committee. And those appointees are Jenny Ottley, Nate McAllister, and Deputy Mayor Quinn, all with terms to expire 12/31/2024.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-54, a resolution of appointments to the Business Advisory Committee.
Move it.
Second.
I'm gonna announce the people being appointed. We have Deputy Mayor Quinn. We have Jen Hampton, Bianca Frida, Kathy Kelly, Marilyn Schlossbach, Russell Lewis, Reggie Philman, Phyllis Mufuchi, Sylvia Sylvia, Austin Leopold, Robin Elliott Preston, Ben Ross, Chris Dubdorsky, David Lewis, Danny Crook, City Manager Viero, all with a term to expire 12/31/2022.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 22-55, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Community Development Block Grant Committee. And those appointees are, we have Mayor Moore, Deputy Mayor Amy Quinn, Cassandra Dickerson, and Alicia Boyd, all with a term to expire 12/31/2022.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Sorry, Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to Resolution 22-56, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Code Enforcement Quality of Life Committee. And those individuals are, Councilmember Clayton, Councilmember Chapman, Greg Hopson, Patricia Zandletto, Eileen Schwaber, Diane Shelton, Pamela Major, Jill Potter, Naomi Hogan, all with a term to expire 12/31/2022.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to Resolution 22-57, authorizing appointments to the Deal Lake Commission. And those appointments are Jenny Tower, a regular member with a term to expire 12/31/2022, Edward A. Winter with a term to expire 12/31/2022.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to Resolution 2022-58, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Environmental Shade Tree Commission. And that appointee is Nancy Sabino as alternate number one with a term to expire December 31st, 2026.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 22-59, a resolution approving appointments to the City of Asbury Park Green Team. And those individuals are, the city manager, or her designee, director of planning redevelopment, or designee, chairperson of the Environmental Shade Tree Commission, or designee, chairperson of the Asbury Park Business Committee, or designee, councilmember Eileen Chapman, or designee, Yvonne Adams, Derek Minnblum, Michael Cascolano, Russell Lewis, Kathleen Mumma, Diane Pettit, Giuseppe Grillo, Barbara Kreizak, Jen Kozewski.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Did I? Quinn.
Sorry.
Councilmember Clayton.
We better sit in our right seats.
I know. That's what I'm looking at.
There isn't the next one.
Musical chairs. We are on to Resolution 22-60, appointment to the Recreation Advisory Committee. And those individuals are, Councilmember Jesse Kendall, Councilmember Eileen Chapman, Esther Kerowski, Torrin Jordan, Angeline Brown, Angeline Anderson, Douglas Eagles, Jesse Riss, Sylvia Sylvia, Vic Shood, Hyrum McAllister, Shawna Gartell.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to Resolution 2022-61, a resolution appointing member to the participatory budget committee. And those individuals are, Janie Barlington, Alexander Kurtuski, Joe Lucarelli, Chris Manzello, Louise Murray, Jacqueline Sharp, Pedro Travello, Paul Wannstein, with council liaison Eileen Chapman, and all with terms to expire 12/31/2022.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-62, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Parking Advisory Committee. And those individuals are, Mayor John Moore, Michael Manzello, Jean Dello, Barbara Kreizak, Maggie Quentin, William West, Jordan Modell, Jill Potter, James Banano.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 22-63, a resolution appointing regular and alternate members to the rent leveling board. And those members are, we have Marian Antonucci and Nadia Fontaine with three year, I'm sorry. Marian has a one-year term expiring on 12/31/2022. Nadia Fontaine will have a three-year term expiring on 12/31/2024. And we have Peter Siegel, who shall serve for a one-year term expiring on 12/31/2022. Mark Hadnich shall serve for a three-year term expiring on 12/31/2024. Jesse Ricks shall serve for a two-year term expiring on 12/31/23. Kristen Hubert shall serve for a two-year term expiring on 12/31/23. Derek Blum shall serve for a one-year term expiring on 12/31/2022. Jama Shouten shall be designated as alternate number one, shall serve for a three-year term expiring on 12/31/2024. Jack Daly, who shall be designated as alternate number two, shall serve for a two-year term expiring on 12/31/2023.
Move it. Sorry.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-64, a resolution appointing members to the Public Art Commission. And those appointees are, Deputy Mayor Quinn, Michelle Alonso, Mary Ellen Forgot, and Andrew Surgram, with all with terms to expire 12/31/2024.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-65, a resolution appointing members to the Planning Board. We have, Councilmember Yvonne Clayton is hereby appointed to serve as Class Three member of the Planning Board for a term of one year. We have Eric Libbo with a term to expire December 31st, 2024. Barbara Kreizak with a term to expire December 31st, 2025. Michael Manzella with a term, Class Two, with a term to expire December 31st, 2022. Danielle Shimino, alternate number one, with a term to expire December 31st, 2022. Juanita Barnes, alternate number two, with a term to expire December 31st, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-66, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Sunset Lake Commission. And the appointees are Jamie Nadel, Sue Henderson, and Mark Axe, all with a term to expire 12/31/2023.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-67, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Mayor's Wellness Committee. And those appointees are, Mayor John Moore, Michael Manzello, Lisa Lee, Wendy Glassman, Allison Soraco, Vic Shood, Douglas Eagles, Nina Sutherland, Pamela Major, all with a term to expire 12/31/2022.
Move it.
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-68, appointing members to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. And those appointees are, Daniel Harris with a term to expire December 31st, 2025. Jill Potter with a term to expire December 31st, 2025. And Bonnie Nash as alternate number one with a term to expire December 31st, 2022.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to Resolution 22-69, a resolution approving change order number one for Sunset Park Improvement Project.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
To Resolution 22-70, a resolution amending a contract with Ben Schaefer Recreation for playground equipment located at Seventh and Ocean Avenue.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call.